Good evening. This is our special board meeting on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Breiner.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Jethlin.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Tuttle.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in thy name, God, in thy name, with liberty, justice, and the throne of our
Thank you. This meeting was called for the purpose to discuss revenue planning, a possible change to summer board meeting schedule, and to conduct an executive session to discuss safety. Just want to, in advance of that, let you all know that when we return from our executive session, we don't anticipate having a vote, but you four are all welcome to stay and wait for us to return. Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Yeah, I'll get it kicked off. Just wanted to give the board and community a quick update after we had our May forecast update on revenue planning. We will be giving a full, final version of the five-year capital plan, so this is still a draft, everything, how it lays out. Really, it's, from my perspective, it's more about the numbers, just to kind of plan things out from a budgeting standpoint rather than what's actually going to be specifically in specific areas. But our strategic plan drives everything that we do, and one of the goals that we have is for resources and is to maintain enhanced physical stability by focusing attention on diligence on short and long-term planning. So, short-term planning is our appropriations for the year, and we're ending our fiscal year here at the end of the month of June. And obviously, from a long-term planning, that goes to our five-year forecast, which we update in November and in May. Or any other time we'd have a significant change, as well as the fact that we tie into it. Started a few years ago with Mr. Wilson, and we've continued on with that, is a five-year capital plan. And each year, we add the fifth year out and make any adjustments based on needs or just kind of desires, what we want to accomplish with the timeframe that we have. Another goal is to explore options for alternative revenue, to maximize existing personnel, facilities, and resources. So, you saw that today when we were doing the ribbon cutting, Mr. Casella referencing some of the advertising that he did for the racks to reduce some of those costs. Last year, we generated $50,000 in revenue on the new scoreboard to offset the cost of that scoreboard, as well as to continue to put money into the bank for when that board would go obsolete because of age, and continue to do things like that as well. And then, lastly, to ensure we have a continued balanced approach towards equitable distribution of resources. So, making sure, as we talked about, Mr. Heath touched on it today, we're doing the classroom renovations in the science department, we do the roofs, we do the parking lot paving, and so on and so forth, as well as we do some of our upgrades to our athletic facilities to continue to provide a well-rounded resource to all of our students and community. I think it's important, remember, we, all of our fiscal decisions should be aligned to our five fiscal management beliefs, made in the context of our five-year fiscal projections, five-year forecasts, that we have management options attached to every dollar that we spend. It must add value to teaching and learning, and then we have to aggressively manage our largest areas, which are salaries, benefits, special education, and facilities, and quality is always cheaper in the long term. So, at the May meeting, we did a more detailed dive into the May forecast, so I won't do that again, I just put it up on the screen as a reference. Just, the board, you have the presentation, but you also have some of those charts, I've printed them out, so you have two packets. One's just the charts blown up for some of them, so you can see them easier than it's in the publication that I handed out to. The big key here was, is that our ending cash balance was at $14.5 million, which was positive, if you remember back in November, we were not. A lot of that was attributed to our changes in staffing as a result, excuse me, of the incentive that we offered, so the 57 retirees, not replacing six certified staff, nine classified staff. Flipped our budget by about $11.5 million over the five-year forecast, so that had significant savings. And that should make sense, obviously, since we're, 75% of our budget salary benefits, you know, where we're going to see our biggest savings is with regards to when we make staffing I like graphs, because I think it shows things quicker and easier, particularly for those of you who can't read my numbers that are here with us tonight. As you can see, we're, continue our deficit spend, we've reduced that deficit spend in our out-years, again, because of a lot of the things that Mr. Heath and his team have been working to do to reduce costs, you know, we reduced budgets by 5% going into the next fiscal year, we have done another, other cost saving measures that we went into detail in the past. So, you can actually see that our deficit spend in 2024 is less than it was in 2022, which I think goes to a testament to the things that we're trying to do to stretch that dollar and live within our fiscal management beliefs. Again, you know, as the life cycle, the levy goes into the state of Ohio, when you have flat revenues and increase in expenses, when you first pass a levy, you're underspending, so your revenues are exceeding your expenses. We have crossed the line in the curve where our expenses are exceeding our revenues, so we're spending down our cash balance, and we will have to have discussions, as we've talked about, to look at additional revenue sources to continue to be able to fund the level of educational and support services that we have. And we're looking, and this is the May update here, probably somewhere in the '26, '25, '26 fiscal year, and continue to monitor that, because that kind of depends upon a multitude of things, if we pass the renewal, and if we go out and seek additional money for permanent improvement funds. I think it's always important to remind the board and the community that we have a general fund operating budget reserve policy, and that budget reserve fund can not be more than 5% of the revenue of the preceding year, so it's about $5.2 million, which we've almost fully funded at this point. The Board of Education shall maintain a minimum general fund cash balance of 15% of the annual total general fund expenses, less the amount in our budget reserve. So, in our case, our appropriations this year is $126.3 million, but again, that's inflated, if we remember, because we funded the out-years of our capital improvement fund by making one large transfer rather than four. But 15% of that equals $18.9 million. You subtract the 5.2 million that we have in a budget reserve within the general fund, so that means that we cannot fall below, per our own policy, a cash balance of $13.7 million. So, if we go back a couple slides, our cash balance at the end of '27 is $14.5 million, so we're getting there, you know, so we, I mean, these are the types of discussions that we need to be having now, so that we're not driving towards a proverbial cliff without a plan, so to speak. So, this is a slide that I've shown probably once or twice. We have a $1 mil permanent improvement levy from 1988 that collects approximately $975,000 annually after we transfer out $100,000 of it from, to an emergency reserve that we keep in place for things that we don't, that pop up that we didn't have planned or expected. Those types of things would be sidewalks that, you know, need to be replaced sooner than we expected, a rooftop unit that goes out, an issue that we have with sort of heating and cooling during the middle of the year that we didn't expect, so those kind of things that just pop up that we can't necessarily plan for. So, we do set off aside each year about $100,000 for that, then we use the rest of it to kind of fund our projects that we have going on, so it's about $975,000 a year for that. If we were to adjust for inflation, the 1988 value of a million dollars, it would be worth about $2.5 million, and it's probably actually even higher now with the inflation rate that we've continued to see over the last six to eight months since I did this last. Talk about the fact that Carnegie Mellon University Architecture wrote a white paper, so, called Addressing Inex with Investment in School Facility Maintenance, and they said that, in a very roundabout way, I've kind of summarized this, that 2% of the replacement value is about how much money you should invest to maintain your facilities. So, our replacement value back in November, when I did this initially, was $250 million, much like the values of your homes in the community. We saw a drastic increase when we did our insurance renewal, as I shared with the board, that went up to, actually, they had it over $315 million, we negotiated that down to $305 million, was our total insured value, and we're getting another appraisal from Liberty Mutual on that, which helps us, because, you know, we pay our premium based on the total insured value of our properties. And Mr. Vaccararo would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody, total insured value does not mean replacement value, it's just an easy number for us to use, because if we were to replace all of our buildings in the event of a large catastrophe, we would pay more than $305 million. So, simply put, that means, you know, based on Carnegie Mellon's, you know, philosophy, we need about $6 million a year to just maintain. And, you know, I just put that out there because that would be about what we're spending now, because currently, the general fund allocation on average over the life of the forecast, and this includes fiscal year '28 now, because we're getting prepared for the June 13th meeting, is approximately $4 million a year. So, you, that is just for the projects that we have, and we'll go through this a little bit more detail, but the things that we need to do, plus some of the enhancements that we're doing, just because it's been 50 years and it's time to upgrade those facilities so that we get another 50 years out of them, much like that you see going on throughout the district. So, we're spending about $4.8 million annually on preventative maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. Some things that I want to highlight, some assumptions that I'm making, so that you, when you think about this, there's things that have changed even since May. I've increased the price on the assumption for buses. Buses have gone up from about $100,000 a bus to $140,000 a bus in the last year. So, obviously, I have to forecast, for, forecast that. That being said, too, that means that when we forecast out a 5% increase on those out-years for buses, just to kind of keep up with the trends on inflation that we're seeing, that, you know, has a bigger impact on our forecast, too. I have also, as I shared with the board, we are self-insured for workers' compensation, doing some research and looking at some stop-loss that we have protection and some added insurance for, lack of better ways to describe it, that would protect us from huge claims for our self-insured workers' compensation. I believe that we are in a very good spot, and we've built up a nice reserve, so we will not continue to charge ourselves for our workers' compensation over the next few years.
I'm sorry. This is ringtone, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, with that, there's going to be savings, because we don't have to have that expense built into our budget. And because we're self-insured, that's a savings that we wouldn't have if we weren't self-insured and we were just in the pool with Bureau's worker compensation. So, again, just an advantage of some of the groundwork that Mr. Wilson had done, we're one of the few districts in the state of Ohio that are self-insured, and because our claims have been low, and because we continue to fund at a fixed rate, we've seen savings between the increases that the BWC's charge people, we haven't seen those, but now we're at the point, too, where we're fully funded for enough time, where I think it's, we're very conservatively safe to not charge ourselves for that, and we'll still be in a very good So, that expense has been reduced, and we also added $500,000 a year in safety upgrades, starting in fiscal year '24, that hadn't been accounted for in the past, based on discussions that we've had since November with that, and that's $500,000 on top of the additional expense that we have for the phase-in that Mr. Heath's going to reiterate again tonight on the school resource officers. So, we're looking at a safety investment from 500, you know, almost a quarter, quarter million dollars a year, increased safety investments on the district, just to ensure the safety of our students. We included the additional concrete needs for our five-year concrete plan that we've developed, we included the Menor High School family and consumer science renovations for fiscal year '26, and we removed a $150,000 chiller upgrade that we had intended to do because of some repairs that we did, we feel that we don't need to do that in the future, and reorder projects based on current need. So, if you look at just those assumptions, if you look at a post-May model with our severance package, and in addition, $2 million in safety costs that would be associated, and the workers' comp change, we can actually be in a little bit of, even a better position than we were a month ago without those things happening. So, between the savings that we're going to see with workers' compensation, even with the increased cost of the $500,000 to safety that wasn't initially budgeted in the forecast, by putting that in, we are still in a better fiscal position from that. And this graph just kind of shows, again, we're looking at '25, '26 for the need for, if nothing else changes, if we pass the renewal and we don't have a PI levy, we'll have to have general operating dollars in probably '25, '26. This is just a snapshot of our planning document that we use, looking at the spreadsheet that has the color red and the yellow and the orange and the gray on it, which I also gave you a separate copy of, so you can look at it a little bit closer. You can see in yellow are the things that we added that weren't previously included in the five-year capital plan. The orange is the area that we have removed, and we've actually kind of rearranged things on when we think timing-wise it'll happen. So, for example, the varsity floor, complete replacement in the varsity gym bleachers, we moved those up, because the floor cannot continue to be sanded down, it's, you know, it's 50 years old, it's got to the point where it's so thin, if we try to sand it down one more time, it could break. So, that floor does need to be replaced, and our bleachers are almost at the life expectancy, you know, bleachers have a life expectancy of about 30 years, these bleachers are right at the 20, I think, 27, 28-year range, and it would behoove us to do everything at one time, because we're putting the new floor in, to put the bleachers in at that same time, and there are some safety concerns with the current bleachers that we've had in, based on an injury that we experienced with a student in the gym, so it would behoove us to make that upgrade now. So, by doing that, we push some other things back further down the road, because they were not as pressing as those areas. But if you look at it from the facility improvement standpoint, you know, we get a million dollars a year in permanent improvement funds, and we, you can see, just from paving and roof replacements alone, and you've heard me say this a number of times, we're spending well over the amount of revenue that we bring in, just from those two things alone. So, if we just did those two things alone, we couldn't do anything else. But we know that we have to replace the windows and the doors at the high school, they're over 50 years old at this point, it's, you know, they're inefficient, they're drafty, they're rusting out in areas that they need to be replaced, which also is a safety upgrade, right? I mean, at the same time, if we're being honest, you know, in '26, you see the fact that we have to replace the elevator at the high school at Shore. We're spending a lot of time with those elevators down, we're spending a lot of time bringing people in to get them fixed. I can tell you from experience, I was the high school principal here, we had a kid get stuck in the elevator, because it broke down with the students in there. It's the last thing you want to see happen, when you have kids who have to use those elevators to get to and fro, from the first and second floor. I mean, again, our buildings are 50 years old, they look great, but there's things that we have to do to upgrade and maintain them. The family consumer science classroom, you know, we did apply for a grant, but if we don't get the grant, that room's going to have to be renovated, and then we're going to have to do that either through permanent improvements, or, you know, right now, using funds from the general fund to offset that cost, because that room is in need, I must need to be somewhere, I apologize. So, that room needs to be upgraded. Look at '27, there's not a thing on that list that we can't, that, you know, we can't do. Safety upgrades, roof replacement, paving and concrete, $600,000, you know, moving stuff to our emergency reserve for $100,000, rooftop units that have to be replaced because they're becoming obsolete, $90,000. Replace the football turf. You know, we extend the life of our turf by maintaining it, but every 13, all the 13 years, we have to replace the turf that we have, and there's costs that we have that are saved because we have turf, because we're not spending money watering that turf, we're generating revenue from all the use of the turf, I mean, if you ever out here on a Saturday or have kids, grandkids, Saturday or Sunday, they're out there with that flag football, that generates revenue for the district that goes into the replacement of that turf, so that we don't, we don't feel that full cost.
Can I just ask the family in consumer science, if the grant came through, how much of it would go, how much of that would
All of that would go away.
So, that would be a wonderful
So, that would allow us to move up, or maybe do a larger section of a roof, rather than doing multiple sections of a roof over the course of time.
Bill, can I ask too, I'm sorry.
Do you have any idea when that, we'll get a yay or an a from
I think by the end of July, we're supposed to hear.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
No, you're fine. The safety upgrades of the $500,000, the big grant that we got, none of that is going towards this $500,000, is it?
Correct, no, those, these would all be additional upgrades. I don't want to steal thunder, so
That was my question, are we going to talk about that in the executive, or what, can you share now? What was all, how did you come up with $500,000? Or is that something that we're talking about later?
Well, no, because I don't even know if we'll need to go into executive session, but what we're looking at is kind of a phase-in process with some of the, like, the safety vestibules, for example.
Okay.
And we've got a couple of quotes that we can share with you, you know, during the process here, too. So, we're, it's a nice round number to start with, but that'll at least give us some of that money set aside each year to do some of the additional safety features that we're looking at. The other piece, again, from the grant that has come through for us already this year, we've got radios and cameras, door sensors, those sorts of things, those are going to need to be on a life cycle then as well, and if we have that standalone line item there, we can continue to get those on a similar five-year plan, 10-year plan, depending on what the life expectancy of those cameras and radios are, to make sure that we have those things always updated here in the future as well.
That includes the two SROs in the $500,000?
That's a different
Addition.
That's different.
So, this would just be strictly for capital improvements?
Yep.
Got it, okay. We've talked about many things with safety, are there anything, are there any of the bigger items that we had prioritized that this wouldn't cover?
Vestibules.
It wouldn't cover?
It would.
It would?
Yeah. They'd cover vestibule enhancement, they would cover potentially, you know, your door sensors that we've talked about, it would cover interior door replacements.
What about the, sorry, that we had talked about for the buses, the app for parents to see, is that in that $500,000?
Yeah, and I can talk about some of that here in just a little bit, too.
Yeah, so it's like, it's a number that we felt would cover all of those things that we want to just chip away at, right? Like, so prioritizing the things that we know that we needed to get done, vestibules, door sensors being the utmost priority, and then, you know, other safety, I mean, because safety doesn't just stop with, like, school shooters, right? I mean, it could be, we've talked about even Orchard Hollow, you know, just getting more parking, or like, creating a space for the buses to go, so that we have a safer place for our kids to get on and off the bus, and we're not creating, you know, other things elsewhere, because, yeah, it's just things that we can't do, because when you have a million dollars, it just makes it difficult, right? Like, you don't have the ability to go, hey, or if there's things that we decide that we're not going to do, and then we just keep that money, the nice thing about a permanent improvement fund, just to remind everybody, it can only be used on things that have a useful life of five years, so it's not salary benefits, that it can build a little bit of that reserve, too, so when the event that we have that boiler that goes out, then we're not breaking into our budget reserve, in the sense that that money's there to do that. So, it's not money that we have to spend just to spend. But it's going to allow us to continue to have a camera replacement plan, because we don't have a plan right now, because we don't necessarily have the funds to do that, so, you know, as we added those things with the million-dollar grant that you just referred to, Ms. Payne, is that now, okay, what happens in five, 10 years when those cameras are obsolete or they're not, and there's other things that come up in place that we want to invest in? Various forms of glass that may be in entrances that we want to upgrade to, because, you know, new schools are being built with, you know, bulletproof glass, that we don't have in our entrance areas, you know, just things that we start considering to make some of those safety upgrades, that, you know, if we have the money to do it, it allows us to have a budget to do that.
I love having this type of overarching plan, because there's a prudence to it. You know, you're anticipating that you buy a camera, it's fulfilling a valuable function in governing the school district and caring for our children in our buildings, but if it's not working, it's useless.
Yeah.
So, being able to be sure that you're improving and then maintaining that is huge.
And what I would say on the out-years like '27 and '28, particularly with the CMR project, not so much the facility improvements, those are things that can, will and probably be adjusted. Those are just things that we've identified from when the plan started back in 2019, that we've pushed, because we've had more pressing things that have come up, or things we want to do. Classic example being the, you know, the room renovations at the high school and the science classrooms. So, to free up the $1.5 million to do that, you know, we felt it wasn't as necessary to maybe create a visitor locker room, or, you know, to upgrade that, or to do the restrooms or the visitors' side at this point, there's things that are, we felt were of a higher need. Mr. Heath, Mr. Porter at the time, they are the ones that help kind of drive that discussion along with the board and the community feedback that we're getting.
And I love that, that in particular, because it's a, it's an academic investment that benefits our core purpose, as much as I like it to be nice for our visitors, that's fine to do after we've met our core purpose.
So, if you go to the next page in your packet, or in either packet, it's kind of what's on the screen behind you, the spreadsheet, because remember, it's not just about the facility maintenance, repairs, and upgrades, it's also about the fact that we're spending money in our general fund now on purchases that would qualify as permanent improvements. Buses, vehicles that we have to upgrade, we have a five-year vehicle plan that we upgrade, you know, we have vans, trucks that we use for plowing, vans that we use for our maintenance and facilities, gentlemen and team, we have technology that we're purchasing each year, this, the board's very well aware, that could be coming out of the permanent improvement fund, and we have furniture that we have for upgrades just throughout the district. Again, all have a useful life of five years, they're coming out of the general fund, that general fund money, again, can be used on anything, right? There's no restriction, as long as the board approves the appropriation for it, so, I mean, there's oversight, I don't want to give that impression that there's not, but permanent improvement dollars can only be used on things that have a useful life of five years, which are not, does not include salary benefits. So, if the community and the board decide to approve a increase in the permanent improvement fund, those funds are restricted on what they give you use for, and they're used for the things that we're talking about here generally today. General fund dollars can be used for salaries and benefits, permanent improvement funds cannot. So, you know, I'd just like to reiterate that to everybody, because there is a difference. So, I think the key here is that we get about a million dollars annually in revenue for the PI fund, I think we've established that, it doesn't get stretched as far as it used to back in 1988, it's, you know, not even a half, it's less than half, it's 37% if you're a numbers person. But the reality is, is we spend on average about 4.8 on improvements, maintenance, and facility upgrades, million a year, and we're spending another minimally $1.8 million out of the general fund on other purchases that would qualify as permanent improvement ones, and I've only put the big ones on here. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't include anything that the business operations is spending out of the budget that we give them, that would probably qualify, new lawn mowers, which we could, again, take out of, pay out of the PI fund if we had a budget big enough. But again, when you see, I'm spending over a million dollars a year on roofs, you know, you can't, there's nothing, there's nothing left to spend, and we could, I could bore you with the inefficiencies of breaking projects up, too, right? There's economies of scale, when you do the project all at once, because you're paying, you get cheaper price, they're already here, they're doing the project, you know, you think about the paving project that we did last year, we couldn't do the whole high school, we had to cut out the west lot, we didn't pave the stadium, and now, now you got to come back and do that, so it's a smaller area, so their square, their charge per square foot goes up, price of materials goes up each year. I can speak from experience from a roofing project, right? We break a lot of our roofing projects up. Well, if you're here doing the whole roof, you don't have to, you know, they only make one delivery, they only make, you only have to pick up the dumpster, you know, they're not coming back out, there's no increased cost and inflation, so there's, there is economy of scales that we lose out on, because we don't have the funds to be able to do some of these, these bigger projects, too. So, you know, total potential PI expenses, expenses annually is about 6.7 million dollars. And again, remember I said 6 million dollars for maintenance on that, but I've added into this cost, things that aren't maintenance related, right? Their purchases that qualify or revise code, furniture, vehicles, those aren't maintenance. Those are, those are purchases as well that just could be qualified as PI. So that's why it's above the 6 million dollars. So I just want to reiterate that to the board and community. So if we, if we were to get a 2.5 mil levy on the ballot for November, it would generate about 5.5 million dollars additionally in revenue that wouldn't start fully until fiscal year '25 because if it passes in November, we don't collect until this January, which is the end of the fiscal year, even though it's the beginning of the calendar year for '24. So we'd get about 2.8 million dollars that first year in additional revenue, that fiscal year, which would then allow us to transfer back some of the money that we transferred out because we wouldn't need that 8.3 million dollars to fund the out years of the projects because we'd be getting more money from the general fund, or in the permanent improvement fund, excuse me. So I could, we could transfer back that 8.3 million dollars. So you'll get a one-time transfer back and you'll also be getting continued reduction in expenses on the out years because we'd be able to remove all of the purchases that I've already touched on today. And that would fully fund our facilities, maintenance, repairs, upgrades, as well as the replacement of the buses, the vehicles, our technology plan and our furniture replacements that we have. So why is this important? Because if that was to pass, that 2.5 mil levy, bottom line is that puts us at a 31.4 million dollar cash balance at the end of '27. So we're, we're about 17 million dollars better than we were if we were able to get the support that we needed to, to generate that additional two and a half mils of revenue. Which then obviously pushes the likelihood of when we need a general operating levy out even further, probably looking at '26, '27 now. So last time we asked for new general operating levy money was 2016. You know, PI levy is, is a new levy. If it happened this year in November, that's eight years, which is longer than the average life cycle of a levy, which is about five years if not less. General operating would be closer to 10 years and it'd be at a reduced millage rate too. We'd be at closer to four, five mils that we would need. I like my graphs because I think they, they paint the pictures much clearer and articulate better than I ever could. The blue line is where we were in November. So we were in a negative balance, cash balance. You can see the gray line is the May update line that I had. You can see that the black line is the line that represents the workers' compensation change as well as the inclusion of a transfer out of 2 million dollars in '26 to fund the safety. 500,000 dollars increase that we've added to the capital plan because it's underfunded currently. It would be 2 million dollars short, but that should make sense. 24, 25, 26, 27, it costs 2 million dollars because they're 500,000 dollars each. And then the red line represents if we were to pass a 2.5 mil permanent improvement levy and it also includes the workers' compensation change. And that's where we get that 31 million dollar cash balance at the end of '27. So if you're a numbers person, that just is the actual values, so you have them for your reference. May update, we had 41 days of cash at the end of the fiscal year with the workers' compensation and the safety included in. We're at 43 days, so it's not a material change. It is better, not significantly different though. If a 2.5 mil levy was to pass, based on the assumptions that I shared with you today, we'd have 91 days cash. So almost twice as, more than twice as much.
What's the, like, what do they recommend us having on cash?
60 days is common. 30, I think, is the minimum. Ours is driven by, remember, ours is driven by, you know, our, our budget reserve policy that we have. But again, you don't want to wait. We never want to wait, right? You're not going to, I'd hope none of us would do this unless we were forced to, right? I mean, sometimes we can't control our circumstances, but, you know, you wouldn't, you would not choose to not go to work until you got to the point where you're, at the end of the month and you need to pay all your bills because then it's, it's going to be too late. Because if the community doesn't support that and then we don't pass, then we're making significant cuts that are affecting really what we're trying to do here, which is educate kids. Just as a reminder, for every 100,000 dollars, a two and a half mil levy costs 87 dollars and 50 cents. So if I lived in a 300,000 dollar house, I'd multiply that number by three. If you like to look at things that, how much you pay per month, that would be the value to the right, 7 dollars and 29 cents. And again, you'd multiply that number by five, six, if you live in a 500,000 or 600,000 dollar home, or if you live in a 300,000 dollar home, you'd multiply by three. We do it in 100,000 dollar values just because it's the easiest, I find it the easiest to communicate because then you just take the approximate value, you're helping to multiply that by whatever gets you to that number.
Isn't that also what's on the ballot now because of the ballot change?
Yeah, the ballot language is really weird, you know.
I thought it changed to be a hundred, per hundred instead of a hundred, like, it was like, it would show like this instead of.
I think that was their intent. Yeah. They add a lot of extra words.
Sure, yes.
With the valuation of your house, it's not the market value.
This would be the market value. I've done it, so it's just a key, yeah.
It's the market value.
This is based on your market value.
67%.
Yeah, no, 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 no other math. Just take what you think you can sell your house for and multiply by, yeah, yeah, that's the number.
That's the number. Okay, okay.
I try to put school funding in terms of what we can all understand, which is very difficult because they don't make it easy. So this would be your market value of your house. That's a great question though. Because your valuation, the teacher in me feels like I got to explain this to the people in the room. Your valuation is different than your market value. What you get taxed at is actually 35% of your market value. Roughly, give or take. It's your assessed value actually, which is actually lower than that. Timelines, just as a reminder, more so the focus of this slide is what's on the right. Is if we're going to put something on the November 7th ballot, we have to have two resolutions passed and filed prior to August 9th. Happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of review, but.
So we would have to have our first resolution next week?
Either next week or at the special meeting in, at the end of the month when we do the month end close in June.
And then a second resolution.
And then we'd have to do a second resolution prior to the end of July. I would recommend to do that so we have time, yeah.
Is that what you're recommending, Bill?
My recommendation, yeah, we would do first, the first resolution at the, to buy some time. Because I don't want to rush it because I'm out, as you guys know, tomorrow through Saturday. And I'd like to make sure I have time to get with the attorney and make sure with the auditor, certify everything, that we put it on at the June 28th. Is that everyone worth looking at, right? I think so.
28 through 29.
Yeah, whatever that Thursday is.
Is it the 29th?
Yeah, so the 29th. And then I can take that to the auditor, get it certified, and then we can, at the July meeting, if it's ready, we could even do the July 11th meeting, do the second resolution.
And that would, if that was to pass, then we could not have to put anything on in '25?
Correct. The goal would be to be able to push it at least till '26.
So we would be authorizing the emergency levy renewal?
Yep.
And then the PI levy. Those would be two pieces of one resolution or two resolutions?
Two resolutions.
For each?
And two separate issues on the ballot.
So two resolutions, but each resolution would, would include both of those pieces?
I would talk to the attorney on how that, who would be best.
So it might be four pieces?
Could be four, yes.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, yeah.
Okay. And we had previously talked about the renewal levy, possibly changing that to continuous. Are we just leaving it as it is or?
That would be what I, I would not go less than 10 years as we just did it, for sure. We have put it on now a number of times. It's from 2004. I, I would just, I mean.
Is that a normal cycle that after a while it then becomes continuous? Like, is it? Is that an, an average type of thing?
In manner it is, yes.
So you've proven yourself.
We've typically, when we've proven to the community that we've been trustworthy with those dollars, we've, we've made them continuous. That's why we don't have a lot of levies. That's not the case in other surrounding districts. We'll be Eastlake, Kirtland, they have levies on every year that doesn't end with, well, Kirtland, I can speak from experience. It doesn't end in a five or a zero, they have a levy on. And it's always, it's just a renewal. And that's just because they, but they're, yeah. It's just their five-year cycle that they keep putting it on. There's confusion and voter fatigue with that. I, I, I wouldn't recommend it, but 10 years would be my.
At least.
Least. I think it's probably behooves us to just do with, if we're going to put the PI levy on, just leave it as an emergency because to make it continuous, we have to switch it to a substitute. So that just creates confusion. And then now we got, you know, we're explaining multiple things. I, I think it's just, hey, we just, it's coming off for 10 years. Trust us again for 10 more years for this emergency levy. It's a no tax, no new taxes. It's not an increase in revenue for the district. It's just to maintain what we have. The, the tax increase is the 2.5 mils.
I would agree with that. I'd, I think possibly changing it to continuous while also simultaneously asking for more money would be, make me nervous.
Just a lot of explanation.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's necessar, I mean.
It would be different if it was a three-year or a five-year, but 10 years, you know, is a substantial amount of time. So that, you know, it's, I wouldn't want to be in that situation like, let's say, Kirtland's doing almost every year. Because there's, there's a cost to the campaign to share with the community, make sure that it's understood. Any literature that would need to be published, mailed, whatever, that, you know, we want to be thrifty in every way that we can.
Yeah. Well, there's, yeah, there's a time limit. And just as a reminder, we don't spend any district dollars on campaigns.
But you fundraise to do that campaign.
There's time. There's a time limit from the superintendent and myself, right? I mean, there's, there's lots of meetings that have to be had to continue to explain and share the rationale behind it. Not to say vote yes or no, but just to educate people to know. Much like we're doing tonight, we're going to have to do it hundreds of times over just because the community needs to understand so that they have the information they need to vote, whatever way that they choose to vote.
It's a measure of respect for the voter.
Yeah.
You know, to take the time to.
Yeah, so if I was to have, to answer Mary's initial question and kind of just to summarize, my recommendation is a 2.5 mil levy with the renewal, two separate issues. First, first approval would be the end of June. Second approval would be at the July meeting ideally. So we don't have to have another special meeting to do that. And they both would be on in November. We keep it as an emergency levy 10 years for the renewal. And we would go five years for the PI levy and show the community that if they entrust us with the revenue, you know, in five years, we can reevaluate and then go from there. And again, we are presenting every June of every school year. We, we provide an update on how we use our permanent and capital, you know, our capital funds. So that's something that's in policy. We do it every year. We share people, you know, what, what's, what's being spent, why it's being spent and how we're doing that.
All right. And what do you need from us?
I guess just any questions that you have or anything that you would need to be comfortable with the, but not telling you how to vote, but that you'd be comfortable voting at the end, at the end of June, I keep on saying January, at the end of June on an initial resolution on the need for either the renewal or a permanent improvement levy.
One of the things I appreciate is that you've made incremental explanations for more than six months about these issues, how the five-year forecast has been evolving, things that we've done as a district to tighten the belt, reduce costs. I think the two big prongs were the, the healthcare concession that was from a year ago with the support of our unions. And then the buyout, which made a very clear cost without having anybody going through the pain of roofing.
Yeah.
Which is big, that's a big.
The only thing I, and I know I had emailed you about this, not that it doesn't sit well, but the, the changes that we did to the fields.
Yeah.
The costs that are associated with that being, I think it was like 2.4 or some, 2. something mil, million for the changes at the football field and then like another 2. something million for the baseball fields. And that's not in here because we did it for 2023, right? So that's not in this, in this document. And I just, I would, it would, wouldn't feel right if I didn't at least mention that. I think that doing all of that work and having people see it all and then people are asking, you know, who, whose pocket is that coming out of? And it's essentially coming out of their pocket, right, like the taxpayer. So I would just think moving forward, obviously we can't do anything about what we've already done. But moving forward, I don't see anything on here that's like, oh my gosh, it's a want versus a need. All of these things look more like needs to me. But if there was something that was more of a, we want to do this, but we don't essentially have to do it, I would prefer going forward that we go to the taxpayers first and say, hey, would you support this? This is part of what we want to do, you know, and then asking for a levy. Can't change anything in the past, obviously, but I, I just feel like that was, I don't know, it just doesn't, I guess it doesn't sit well.
Two things, yeah, two things I'll say on that. If a levy doesn't pass in November for a permanent improvement, everything in the out years will be, have to be reevaluated because we can't continue to maintain subsidizing out of the general fund. The first part of that is this plan has been in place since 2019, has been communicated repeatedly based on an evaluation that the district did on our facilities and the facilities of those in our league to be able to provide our students and our community with, pardon the cliche, or the pun here, a level playing field, right? You know, we had, we had to add two girls softball fields because, you know, we didn't have softball fields in, in our facilities. Unfortunately, when the decision was made to, to give the land to Lake Health to build the new health center, you know, we lost a JV field. The current varsity field doesn't drain well. So you see some actually renovations on that field. And from an economies of scale piece, when we decided that we were going to put another field in where we're putting the turf field, we looked at it and made the decision that, you know, we have all of our varsity fields in one area. So that was part of that discussion. It was like, okay, should we do turf for the varsity field? And we talked about Northeast Ohio. The, and if you've ever been out here and you have kids that have played out here, it's a swamp land in this area out there. That's why we put the soccer field in, lacrosse field in, it's in turf. And we, we made the decision to do that. I understand how optics matter, but the reality is, is we're putting a state yard facility in for our student athletes in our community that will be able to be used, much like the Menor softball league now can use our turf softball field all the time. They don't have an issue. They've donated, you know, support back to us for the use of that field. The same thing's going to be true of our youth sports for, for the baseball. It's going to create more space for our kids. So the community will get, they'll get, where sometimes when we do things, maybe people don't benefit from it because it's just our kids. And not to say that if our kids don't benefit, everyone's not benefiting, but there's going to be community use now that can be used from those, from those areas. And, you know, the, the way that we're grading everything out there is going to drain better. So we're going to be able to use those areas even more. And again, these are one-time costs with the initial piece of it. Obviously, there's upkeep with turf and we've included that. Obviously, there's upkeep with turf and we've included that into our budgeting process. But I think if we want to compete in bringing people to stay in Mentor, to come to Mentor, or, you know, want our kids to be able to compete, we got to have facilities that allow them to do that. I get what you're saying. And I, I guess the thing I would say from that, that, that money was already set aside for those projects, so it's, it's not breaking the bank, so to speak. But the reality is, is, you know, we have to do that. And that's why I think for me, I want to put this out to the community because they know what we're going to be doing with this money. And if they don't want us to do these, if they don't want us to maintain the roofs, they don't want us to do other upgrades to classrooms and things like that, now we'll know for sure, one way or the other, that they, that's what they want us to spend the money on, or they don't. And then what's going to happen is if that fails in November, this entire plan gets blown up, right? Because now we're back to, we have a million dollars and we need to only fund, because we can't keep funding stuff out of the general fund.
Right.
Not when we're deficit spending. And, you know, if we have to transfer money back, it's like, what, what are these projects are we going to fund?
So if we did have the money for those projects, why did we need to take from the general fund then?
That's how, that's how we did have the money.
Okay.
That's where it flows. Because the, the decision was made back prior to my arrival, coming back, even in yours, that they were going to use the underspending of the, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody, you know, Mary and Tom. So we did. The underspending of the current budget and the over collection of revenue to fee, to, to pay for these things. Because they, they were needed. And it really started with the, the girls softball fields. And then coming up with, okay, we do need facilities that need to be updated because they haven't been updated. And how are we going to, to pay for these things? And there was, that was the decision, and that's how that money was being transferred. My philosophy was is we're going to transfer, let's just transfer all at once. Let's stop dragging it out. Put it in there so that we know that the money's there to fund it. And then we know what the real impact is on the general fund.
Sure.
It's long ago, some years, because I was already on the board when this happened. So every year that we, we estimate what the collections will be for taxes. If the collections were this many thousands higher than was budgeted for, because you always assume some level of, of not payment, then also if we underspent the budget, because Dan was always looking for every way he could find, you know, outside sources of revenue grants and all the rest. And then we earmarked that money, not just like, oh, buddy, we got something else we can spend. If there was this list of priorities that was already fixed and, and discussed. And I'm as sensitive as anybody at this table about sports versus academics. You know that.
You might have mentioned that once.
I thought, I, here, I thought I was breaking the ground. No, because, again, that's our core mission. However, I do recognize that sports is an important part of the student experience for those who are players and those who are not. It's a very valued part for our community. That's real playing when folks are asking about additional handicap parking spaces so they can come to the football games. And we appreciate that, you know, and it's the kids in the marching band and all those other components. Then there are Title IX requirements that have to do with fully funding girls' sports to be comparable to what the boys are receiving. So there's a lot of variables that happen behind the decisions to say like, okay, we need to do this, this, and this. And even the improvements to our stadium that we just cut the ribbon on, having a better ticket entrance and all of those variables come, you know, there's a price and an investment. And even when we had the original strategic planning discussed six years ago now, almost, and the community, the, the facilities part of that. So that was one, one group of the five who discussed that. Those were the kinds of topics that community members, community leaders, school people, everybody was sharing in those discussions. And that's kind of what generated those priorities. But that's also why science labs were moved up.
And that's what, I, I think my main concern is if we don't pass the levy and we've already spent $5 million on these, you know, updates to the athletics, which are wonderful, but then is it, I would not want it to impact the roofs. The other things that are more kind of almost safety issues, you know? So I would always prioritize safety over redoing the fields or things like that. So obviously, we can't.
And we've been balancing both. I think we're kind of at the precipice. And I think this is another, because I've been thinking about that email conversation, like I, because I told you, I don't disagree, I understand exactly where you're coming from. It's a tough, our communication director hates when I say this, but if you're, if you're, if you're explaining, you're losing. Right? Like, I'm a firm believer of that. She does, she hates that. It's the truth, though. But the reality is, is we've had this discussion since I've gotten here. This has been something that has always, like, my mind works in the fact, have this pool of money for these things. And then people understand like that money's used for that. And then this general operating money can be used for everything else. The problem, and because we didn't want to go to the taxpayers, you know, for, for a variety of reasons, right? You know, I think we don't want to overextend our community or, you know, we're just kind of funding it through the general fund. I think that's created kind of this, this point where we're at. Assistance Financial Advisor Mary and Tom were there last year, my first year. Were in total agreement with me that we need to, we need to put a PI levy on and we need to allocate funds specifically for these projects. Let the community make the determination. And that way, we know that these funds are used for these things and then the general fund's used for everything else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just think we spend the money now and I'm worried about it not passing and then it impacting things that are needs instead of wants, you know?
There was, in the discussion about facilities having to do with the girls' softball field and other things, there were correlating sources of revenue. If you had this, this, and this, you could host a tournament and that brought money in. So it wasn't just money going out or improving facilities so that the athletes could enjoy a nicer field or more people could sit, you know, and, and watch. Or even the bathroom, I started getting calls about the bathroom 10 years ago. Like, oh, the girls' soccer field, there's no bathroom, there's redheads and, and so forth.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a classic point too, right? We were using Portejon's at the soccer and lacrosse field for how long? I mean, even since I was high school principal, so 2011.
Yeah.
When we had that field. So, I mean, that was in, you know, you could argue that, I get it. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I, I don't disagree.
I just, I have, I have to say it, otherwise it wouldn't sit well.
I think it's a, it's a. It's a fair discussion. The reality is, is we're at the point now with our budget that we need to make the determination of, from the community needs to weigh in. You know, if, if, if they don't want us to give them money, then we're going to have to, and we'll respect that. We'll have to adjust our plan and spend the money that we have. And then we'll have to allocate less from the general fund because we can't continue to drive the car off the cliff, right? Like, we can't, you know, we can't continue just to spend, spend, spend because we don't have, we're not a business. We can't generate more rapidly. We have, we rely on our taxpayers to do that. And we've tightened our belts, tightened our belts, and tightened our belts to be able to allow us to do some of these things. And you could argue on some level, some of the things were needed. You know, it depends, where you stand depends on where you sit, right? Like, how you're looking at things. So the reality is, is it is what it is. We, we've defined, tried to articulate to the board of the community, these are the things that we see is a need. This is how we see that we would look to fund it. And if it doesn't pass, then we'll have to readjust the plan. And, you know, what we'll have to do is, all those things I just said not to do, right? Like, we're going to have to break roofing projects down to even smaller chunks because then we're going to spend more money in the long run on that.
I guess, so this is, I, I like this, you know, being able to see it. So going forward, being able to see it like this is really helpful because we are able to see what needs to be done. And if we get into a situation where we are worried that it's going to, you know, yeah, we could say, well, this is more safety than that, so let's move that up. So I think this is helpful, you know, going forward to see all that and, and make decisions based off of that.
Just to speak from my perspective, I wish in 16 years, we were in a position financially to be able to afford wants. I don't know about Tom. Do you remember ever having a want on our list that we could afford to fund? I know it's easy to, to look at it that way.
Only with grant money that built something like this.
Exactly.
That, that was not taxpayer money.
The girls' softball field was at a point where we were facing a lawsuit.
That's right.
So we were way behind in funding that. So everything that we have funded here, there was reasons behind it. There was financial grants. Nothing here was financially funded on a want.
Well, we could have different perspectives on that, and that's okay.
And you can have, you know, people will have a perspective on things. But, yeah, everything is financially justified.
And I agree with that. I think everything is financially justified. But going forward, I think having something like this where we can prioritize, you know, I don't think that people saw the, the financial situation that everybody's in years ago, right? So I'm sure when you guys were making that decision, you didn't foresee all of the fallout from COVID and X, Y, and Z. But.
Well, I mean, you know, if you want to cut down Nebraska's tax, sure, we could cut the baseball team. We could just cut baseball for Mentor, if that's what we want to do.
I don't, I don't think anybody's saying that. I think that's very extreme to say that.
It sure is extreme.
Saying that.
I mean, if we don't pass PI levies, that's what it could come down to.
I literally played in sports when I was in Mentor. I mean, from the football fields to the track fields, I was in it. I did softball, fast pitch.
And the community funded it.
So I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm saying it's something we need to be cognizant of.
Absolutely.
And I don't really appreciate how you just said that about we should cut. I'm not going there. I don't really appreciate that you just did that.
No, I'm saying in an extreme, if PI levies don't pass, that's what we could be facing. Because you're talking about priorities. That's what we're all talking about. And that's what the board has to do. We have to prioritize. So, I mean, you brought up wants and needs. It's always about what's needed. I, you know, I'm just pointing out the fact that we've never had a luxury to fund a want.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of other places that don't have the upgrades that we just did to our football field, which are wonderful. My dad's, you know, been a coach there for over 25 years. I think it's great what we did over there, but it doesn't mean that, that it is more of a priority than roofs. If we don't pass levy, we're looking at possibly not doing roofs or safety issues. So I just think we need to be cognizant of that. I'm not saying cut the baseball teams or anything like that. I, I take offense to that, but.
Well, I didn't mean to offend you.
Here, let me add this. I'm not, I've been around a few years here, here in Mentor. And I can't recall the year in which we went, and not we, I was not on the board at the time, but there was a group of parents who wanted to build a swimming pool, an aquatic center.
Oh, and add a atrium.
Here on our property. And that, the public, our residents spoke up and said, no, that's not going to happen. But the board, superintendent at the time, that was a want. So there was a time in which a want, a definite want at that time, that got, that failed because the citizens had an opportunity to speak up and say, no. So the city of Mentor has done all those things, the ice arena, the second ice arena, things like that. The softball field for the girls, that was based upon an exposure that we had with Title IX because the football field had that fantastic facility. Our young ladies had to play on a muddy field so many times. And there were already, this was two years ago, as I, we were at a conference in Columbus, and the attorney that was speaking in this conference, for Bill and I, we attended, and she spoke of at least two districts in Ohio that had already faced a lawsuit that was filed against them for not having the equal facility for baseball. So that's when he and I sat and we talked with the board members as well. We've got an exposure that's going to come. We need to move on that. And if equal facilities can't discriminate against, well, that's the girls, the boys. So that's why that went along. So we have had, again, prior to our being on the board, the want got blown away.
Right.
Well, and the other thing is, which I think Mr. Wade mentioned, is anything that we have here, we have to think about maintaining. Football turf, the weight room facility that was here, I don't know what kind of condition it was in. Obviously, it needed to be replaced. The ticketing gate, those were upgrades or replacements. So, you know, the roofs, the facilities, we have, we have a responsibility to maintain.
Sorry, closing.
Where do the SROs fit?
They're in our appropriations. And they're in the five-year forecast under purchase services. Because we purchased those services from the state. So that's where, like, next year I added two, and we added two in '25 and then '26.
Okay.
Or maybe '27. Eight total, right? Six or eight?
Yeah, we did four years, so '26, '27.
So eight. So that's in the purchase services line in the forecast. And then in our budgets, that's like 400s.
Anything else you would add?
No, just all good discussion. I think it's, it's discussion we have to have. It's, it's not always easy discussion. It's uncomfortable at times. I mean, I think the reality is, is we are trying to in the last two years and since Craig has come on, I'm trying to articulate exactly what we need. It's exactly how it's going to cost us and how we're funding it. And we'll continue to do that. So I think it's, it's important for us to have these discussions. It's good discourse, you know, we, we owe it to the community to have the discussion. And I think giving the community the opportunity to, to weigh in with their votes will be helpful because if they choose not to support it, we will adjust for not to, but.
Are we communicating to the community that we might be coming back to them in a couple of years?
Yo, yeah. Yeah, every time I've talked about it, yeah, yeah.
You have, but I'm saying like, going forward, we would still have that.
Yes, 100%.
We're asking for PI, but down the road.
This will delay the ability for us to have to come and ask for general operating dollars. We are going to have to ask, I will scream it from the mountaintops. This is not going to solve our revenue issue. This is going to kick the can down the road.
Because of the way school funding is designed, you know?
Correct.
It forces you to go back to the community.
If, if the budget bill comes out and the guarantees are removed, we're, we're done. I mean, that's, we're going to lose $10 million a year in state funding. So like, that, I mean, that's going to, you know, we're going to, I mean, we'd have to have a discussion on what would that look like, right? Like, I mean, it would be, we need to figure that out maybe first. So it's, I think the reality is, is the fact we need to make sure that, as Dan used to always say, just leave us alone. Let us alone. You know, just, just leave us alone. You don't have to give us more, just don't, just leave us alone. You know, our, our taxpayers fund our schools at a high percentage. We, we're well aware, way above the state average, 70-plus percent. The state average is at 40. You know, our community believes in our schools, you know, we'd always agree. That's, again, that's, that's good discussion, right? That's why we have the process that we have. But the, you know, just the state and federal government would leave us alone and not take money from us, we'd be in a much better position.
So Bill, when, when you're saying we can kick this down the road, that is with the assumption that the school funding has the guarantee on it?
Correct.
And if that were to go away, we would be in a whole different situation.
Yes.
As would every other district.
As a state. Well, not every other district.
No, some districts would be better off.
Well, that's true.
That's right. There's about 90 of us that would be in some serious.
Yeah, we're kind of in a minority.
Correct.
We are definitely in a minority.
What, what is that, which, Bill?
Uh, it's the, currently, it's, it's, well, it's, the Senate's working on their bill, their budget bill right now.
And that's supposed to come out in the next week or two.
Yes, next week, I think. Well, this week, I think now. Make the turn if I come back to Arizona.
Always drive out to meet him there.
But if you have questions, or if there's anything that you need that I haven't explained, or if there's another scenario you'd like to see, just let me know, as always. We will present this on a much, not as deep of a level, but again, overview to Mrs. Kane's point about communicating like we have in the past. This is what we see for the project lineup for each of the years. Just remind people how we fund it currently at the June meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Good?
Yeah.
Discussion? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Well done.
Again, I don't think we need to go into executive session for any of the safety topics that I've got to discuss here this evening, because we're not getting into the safety audit pieces. But kind of giving you some updates on, on some of the major topics that we have. So I'm, if we're okay just to continue here, that way everybody can hear what we're talking about, too. I think that'll be great. Kind of a, just to jump off where we left off with, with Bill and talking through school resource officer expansion. Coming out of our, our March meeting, we, we talked about, a lot about how do we get a, a school resource officer in every single building in our district? We had a, a meeting in April with Chief Gunch and with Mr. Philippiac from the city, kind of talking through what that might look like. And then started talking the finances a little bit. Obviously, at that point, the state had set aside a whopping $51,000 for us for school resource officers. That has since gone away for everybody across the state. So that's not there. But again, with, with Bill's work on some of our five-year forecast pieces and those purchase services, we do have kind of a phase-in plan that we've laid out to the city that would add two resource officers each of the next four years to get us to a total of, hopefully, 10, which would cover each of our buildings. One of the things that they shared with us, and this is still probably the biggest roadblock, I guess, for this plan, would be the, the need to get quality officers here in Menter. They're, they're still struggling from a human resource standpoint. So there, there are some pieces that we're, we're still waiting on. We recently were made aware of a couple of retirees, similar to what, Ms. Payne, you had talked a little bit about previously, too. So there are a couple possibilities there. Chief Gunch is looking into that a little bit more, just to identify who they are. And again, if they have to replace those retiring officers anyway, you know, might these retired officers want to step into those, those SRO positions, which we've heard that potentially they would have that interest? That may be a starting point for us with this plan. Again, our hope is, over the next four years, to, to add to each year, which would cover us. We're, we're still kind of playing around a little bit with where those would be located. Because again, we want to be strategic, number one, but also be, be cognizant of not just saying, hey, this is where the school resource officers are, so you can go to that building where they're not and do whatever you want. So how might those rotate around a little bit? Because we do have off-duty resource officers that work with us in Memorial and Shore right now. We have one additional at Ridge. But how might we utilize those rotating officers a little bit more effectively to help us cover some of our other buildings, even as we're going through this transition plan? Again, what, thanks to Bill's work, we've, we've got this set aside now in our five-year forecast under those purchase services. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to, to continue that expansion plan starting in the '23, '24 school year. Questions over that process right now?
Who would they be reporting to, and what are we going to do about benefits?
Yeah, so that was a, a big part of the conversation with Chief Gunch and Mr. Philippiac. Our big thing is, we don't want to be managing our own police force here in the, in the school district. We would love to have that continue through the Menter Police Department. And, and that is their desire as well. The one thing that they continue to talk about as well is, okay, how do, once we get fully staffed with these school resource officers, if somebody's absent for a day, how do we backfill those positions? So they're looking at, you know, what that training might be to have not just the 10 officers that we would have on a daily basis, but 12 to 14 officers trained that could be pulled to cover one of those buildings should one of the officers have a day off for whatever reason. So those are some of those other pieces to the puzzle that we're talking about. But again, we want this to be run very similarly to what we have currently with our, with Officer Skelly at the high school right now. We want that to be run through the Menter Police Department with their oversight, their training, with a combination of our funding to, to really pull this together, so it'd be a true partnership with the city.
But I would expect at the least that we would have, like, some kind of an MOU that would spell out what our expectations would be. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, because we have that on an annual basis.
Okay, who's responsible for what?
Right.
Is there a difference in the type of training that an SRO would receive if their assignment is secondary versus elementary schools?
No, not at this point. Similar training across the board. Obviously, we're very fortunate with, with Officer Skelly because he, he's got a, a great personality to him. He connects well with, with our students. And, and again, just like we do with all of our staffing, we want to make sure that we have the right person in the right seat on the bus, so to speak. And, and we would want to make sure that we've got the right officer for the right building as well. So as we start to go through that process, that'll be part of our conversations with, with, with the Menter Police Department to make sure that we have that there.
Would Menter on the Lake be a partner as well? Because we have one building in their city.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit. Again, that might go back to an MOU type of piece to the puzzle here. Yeah, because again, they're, they're struggling as well, trying to, to staff their police force. So that's something that we'll, we'll start to engage, that conversation with Mayor Eva over there as well.
We, just, just to clarify, Ms. Bryner, I know you mentioned benefits. So when I budgeted, I budgeted the same current cost that we have for Officer Skelly, which includes his portion of the benefits for the city. And then we used an, an average increase of what we've been seeing here over the year with his, his increase to kind of factor out years in. So to try to be as realistic on the budget as we could. Obviously, that's all negotiated, so it's kind of out of our hands to some extent. But I think the numbers we used were pretty reliable.
But we would anticipate that the benefits would go through the Menter Police Department, then?
Currently, yes. That's how I assume.
Which makes sense, so there's continuity.
I think they feel most comfortable, I don't want to step on...
No.
The, the way I understood is they feel most comfortable with the oversight of those, them being employees. If they're going to, if they're going to be Menter Police Officers, they, they want, they want the oversight, and they want them, they want to be able to determine who those people are.
Would they have a cruiser available to them? Or would they use a private, you know, I'm thinking, there's a lot of details.
Probably. Depends.
Yeah, I mean, and there's things I hadn't thought about. Because I know Officer Skelly, if I recall correctly, as part of his work at Menter High School, it included some student engagement, you know, a chance for mentoring and maybe advising in certain situations. You know, he played a role that was beyond his police role to expand to, you know, other aspects that are very valuable. But that's why I was asking about a difference between an elementary school assignment might have kind of a different set of skills and interactions. I mean, I can't imagine, we have superbly trained police. Like, I don't want to die of boredom, you know, nothing, we don't want anything to be happening.
Sure, there's police officers much like teachers who prefer secondary.
I mean, if, there's a lot of variables, and I, I would want us to be able to meet the person's needs in that role, so that he or she can do an excellent job, you know, for us in that capacity.
Craig, do you know, because when I was talking with some of the, some of the officers that were ready to retire, like, soon, a couple of them are, are off-duty officers. They're also in our schools and taking those assignments. Has this been communicated to them so that maybe they stick around and don't go jump ship and go to, like, Riverside or Willoughby's Lake or something?
I'm not sure what conversations Chief Gunch has had with them yet. Like you said, we've had a couple that have reached out to us specifically. And we've had that conversation, and, and we've shared those names with, with Chief Gunch as well. So, obviously, it's not going to be a case where, where we should be reaching out to their employees on those things. But if, if we hear names, we can say, hey, what about this one? And, and Chief Gunch has been great to say, hey, thank you for that. Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, so.
So the one that emailed that you and I had talked about, they know?
Yep, yep.
You know, and when you think about professional development, I'm sure police officers have it the same way educators do. So allowing them to work under that umbrella with the police department, they're getting firearms, recertification, all that stuff, that we wouldn't be in a position to really know what was best practice.
Correct. So we'll keep you updated as we hear more from, from the city on that. But again, I think we've made some, some pretty big headway in the last couple of months on that, on that plan. Another thing that I know we brought up, obviously, with our, our school safety grant this year, we're, we're purchasing some additional cameras. And one of the kind of add-on pieces to that puzzle was the Zero Eyes software and, and monitoring. Berkshire School District actually opened up a brand-new building here this year. And when they built that building, they had this incorporated into all of their cameras already. So they are doing a presentation here next week that I've signed up to go to. It's next Tuesday from 11 to 12, so I'm going to see kind of firsthand what that looks like. And, and that way, we continue that conversation. So I'll give you some additional details on that to see if that's something that we potentially might want to pursue as well. Again, some costs associated with that, that we don't already have earmarked in our school safety grant. But again, could be something that would be incorporated into some of our safety upgrades from a PI standpoint, if, if this is a direction we want to go.
How long has that been there? Isn't this their first full year?
First, first full year, so...
So they, it's not going to be what they will do, it's what they are doing?
They are doing already, yes. Before I get to the vestibules, I, again, sorry for the setup here this evening. But we are, we are having a full-scale safety drill here tomorrow. So that safety drill, from a, from a school district perspective, is going to incorporate all of our district administrators, our principals and assistant principals in the district. We're also u, using our administrative assistants at each of the buildings are going to be part of that. And along with our head custodians, who would all be actively involved in any sort of emergency situation that we might have. So the, the room is kind of set up for part of that drill tomorrow, because a lot of it will be taking place here. Just as an FYI to the community members that are here as well, you'll see a lot of safety personnel, police department, fire department. We've got the county emergency management agency will be here as well. So there's going to be a lot of activity around this facility tomorrow. Kristin, you already sent out a, an email to the community. We will also be notifying the media just so that we can say, nothing's going on. It's just a drill. So we've got that tomorrow that, that we'll be doing. It will be an event that will be taking place at the, the high school. As a starting point, we're going to be utilizing Paradigm as well, and then also the board office for some of the different scenarios that are going to be unleashed upon us here tomorrow as a, as a training force. I am particularly nervous because I was not involved in the planning, so it's all going to be a surprise to me. But it will be great training for us as well, because we'll be reacting in real time tomorrow.
And that was intentional?
Yes.
You weren't in on the planning?
Yes. And, and Mrs. Estes was not involved in the planning either. So from a communication standpoint, we're going to be...
And I'll be there, though. Once again.
Timing's every bit.
I, I need to start taking notes for Mr. Wade. Tomorrow, there will be drill signs that are posted outside as well, just as another layer. But for our group here, we may be sending out text messages, emails, phone calls potentially to all of you as part of the drill tomorrow also. So again, it's a drill. It's only a drill. But we may be communicating with you, just like we would be if an actual emergency was taking place.
And you'd like us to respond?
No.
No. Should I rush over?
Be right there.
Bring my rubber ballot or something.
We'll do whatever we need to do.
So you guys will know what, what type of drill it's going to be once we figure out what it is that's happening. Questions over the full, full-scale drill? And again, I think we do this every four years? Three, four?
Yeah, the, the last one was 19.
Okay, so not every four years we will do.
Table tops, yeah, a little bit less intense.
Yes. Tomorrow will be intense. Let's go ahead and jump to the vestibule piece. So pre-pandemic, we had started the process of looking at the security vestibules that we talked a little bit about in March. And we had some quotes for Orchard Hollow and Bellflower with those concepts and the designs. And we pulled those off the shelf, dusted them off, and then updated them with some of the inflationary costs that we've seen over the last few years, just to get a sense for what those might be like. And again, this goes back into Bill's presentation, where we have some of those safety upgrades with the $500,000 per year. Just to give everyone kind of a ballpark figure, we have three different options for each of those two buildings. With Orchard Hollow and the designs there, we're looking at anywhere from $82,000 to $115,000 for the three options, depending on how we, we construct those. Bellflower would be somewhere between $145,000 and $275,000. And again, part of the issue there, if you know Bellflower, is it's a very open concept. And as you go in that main entrance to Bellflower, literally, you're walking right into an open common area. The, the office is nowhere to be seen. It's up on the second floor, kind of in the middle part of the building. So there would be a lot of, a lot more work to do there to, to actually create a secure vestibule for that entryway.
Would that be outside the building? Or would that be integrated into the existing?
It would be integrated inside the building with the concepts. And I'll, I can kind of lay out some of those things for you here, maybe in our next conversation, as we, as we start to head that direction. But again, those were the two that were done. We at least wanted to get those two updated, so that we could see what those costs would be, so that when we're looking at potential PI levies and the safety upgrades that we've incorporated into the, the capital improvement plan, that we have something to go off of. Obviously, we would need to do our, our due diligence across the board with all of our elementaries, our two middle schools and our high school. High school, we've got a, kind of a starting point there. Sure, we kind of have a starting point there. But to truly have a, a secure entryway, there would still need to be some updates to those buildings, too. So we've got the starting point with those two, since we already had those dusted off. Just wanted to share those with you and with the, the community here today also, so that you knew what those costs were. Questions there?
So what is your timeline? What are your next steps with, with that?
Obviously, we'll need to secure some funding in order to do any of those. So a lot's going to be predicated off of what we have, have been here in November.
Okay, so will we kind of sit on this until November? Okay, so will we kind of sit on this until November to see if?
And once that, once those things are passed, then we'll be able to start right away. Or if it does not pass, figuring out what we do with our capital improvement plan to prioritize some of these things based on our safety needs.
Yeah, I think these safety vestibules are just a huge issue.
Have we considered moving the office downstairs at Bellflower?
That's part of one of the plans in here, too.
I just, that is just.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, today, I mean, with the workers' compensation, we've, for all intents and purposes, we've appropriated for it regardless.
Oh, even better.
Okay.
So that's one of the things that is the change that if, you know, I didn't hear anybody say that they weren't okay with that new kind of outlook. So, I mean, as a starting point.
So we can move on a little sooner even?
Mr. Heath wants to, you know, again, I just want to let him know the money has been, will be appropriated so that he can do those projects as a starting point.
That's even with the school resource officer piece to the puzzle already.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Based on the fact that we had the larger than anticipated reserve in the workers' compensation, we can use that to start those projects as well as any of the other safety ones up to the first $500,000 next year.
So what would be the timeframe to like move forward on those two items? Next summer?
Because you can't, I mean, you can't, it's harder to do them in the middle of school year because of the construction that would have to occur. So we would start, well, we've already kind of got, we've already started.
Started the planning a little bit.
And then we'd go out to bid for those. So we would do that probably sometime in right around election time, to be quite honest. Because you want to have it done so that after January, we're finalizing so that when June hits, like today, first day, we were in here ripping things out already for the science classroom, right? So got to have our ducks in a row.
So if we were to have a successful PI levy, we could possibly be building more than two next summer?
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, yeah.
Potentially, right? I'm just.
Because we'd have to get into the planning pieces for those other elementaries and have the design team come in and take a look.
There's costs associated with the architects, those architects, they're expensive. So, I mean.
But we would have the school year to work on it.
Correct. Yeah, so we would have the ability to do that.
It's a possibility.
Plus, I mean, we also have the quote on the door sensors, which was a priority from our earlier meeting as well. So I mean, that's money that we can do. Because you wonder if you could find the capacity of the construction crews that would be good at this work.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
One of the things I think that would be important to share with the community, there may be people who haven't been on our campuses for a long while. We've had security, you know, and it's not the same as a vestibule by any means. But in order to get into the building.
You have to buzz in.
You have to buzz in. So I think, in the meantime, we don't see that either of those vestibules would be built until a year from now, best case. But those buildings still do have that other system in place.
They have security features, right?
These are enhancements, yeah.
Right, and those have been in place for several years, just because we recognize that the world has changed.
One of the things, when we had the conversation with Chief Gunch and Mr. Filippiac about the SRO piece to the puzzle is, you know, their desire to make sure that we harden the shell of our buildings as much as possible, too. And we're starting to do that already, you know, in having cameras and, you know, door sensors, those sorts of things. Obviously, the security vestibules would be huge because then, again, we're looking at some of the security film and those sorts of things that would be incorporated into those. And those costs are set aside in these quotes as well. But anything that we can do to continue that work, and you see that in our five-year capital improvement plan already with the window and door replacement projects over at the high school, which again, is a huge piece for us. You know, that's going to be some of those things that I think we would need to prioritize as we go through our safety discussions. Again, these first two, I think, are set aside because those are pretty open-concept-type buildings and have unique entryways to them already. The next step for us probably would be to identify where, you know, what are those next buildings that we want to make sure that we tackle that we do feel may be most vulnerable to us. Final two things I have then. One of the things I know we talked a little bit about were the signs, and I gave you a couple of examples here. So over the last couple of months, every time I've gone into a building, one of the things I've been doing is starting to snap pictures of, okay, what sort of signage do we have on the doors at the buildings? Both as you're going in and then as I'm going up, looking at, okay, what do students and staff see? And I would say, overall, there's not a lot. And the stuff that we do have is pretty random as far as where it's located, what it says. We've got different types of signs that are up, almost to the point where I think we may need to maybe clean up and start over a little bit. Because there are some things where, you know, you've got the, you know, see the one example there where, you know, no weapons allowed type thing is in there. There are some others that are just generic that say, no entrance, please use main doors. Okay, that's great, where's the main door based off of where I am right now? Most of the others say, welcome, all visitors, please report to the main office. Great, come on in, find where the office is in Bellflower, good luck. So.
It's the safest place in the village.
Yes, it is. So I wanted to give you some examples as to what is there. I think over the next month or so, what I'd like to be able to do is kind of standardize the language a little bit more so that we have things that are consistent that we can put up and have at each of the entrances to our buildings, both from what the visitors will see as they're looking at the main entrance or an entrance to a building. And then what the students and staff would see as they would approach a door. You can see that one that says, inside signs for students and staff, a big old stop sign, please do not open doors for anyone. And that's in two of our buildings right now. One of them happens to be the high school on one set of doors only. We have 46 doors in the high school. So how do we get this in all of the doors? The only other place that I saw similar signage was at Orchard Hollow. And those are on the two entrances that are facing the parking lot right now. But they do have doors going out the other direction that don't have those signs. So again, just trying to be consistent with, number one, what the signs say so that we're very clear for our students and staff, hey, don't open the door for anyone. And then also for our visitors, what does that look like? I talked to my administrative assistant, Missy Fording. She has a company that she works with for a lot of the signs. Again, I think those are some things that we might want to try and clean up a little bit so it's not so busy because, you know, a visitor can come to the door and see like three, four, five different signs on the three or four doors that you're entering. And what does your eye get drawn to first, you know, who knows?
Is this something we could get done this summer?
So this is something that should be a fairly quick turnaround. So we'll have those things ready to go before now school year. Yep.
Before the start of school?
Yep. So that's the goal, I think, for '23, '24, is to have those signs up and ready to go
before the school year starts.
On the inside of the door to remind children, especially, I think, like this would be particularly useful for elementary.
Right.
You know, so that whether you read or not.
Or even like stop it, I thought that one would be good.
We had also, yeah, we had also talked about just kind of procedurally, like students exiting.
Yeah.
You know, it's not really opening for someone, but it's just, hey, I have open campus and I leave and now it leaves.
Don't let anyone in.
Right, yeah, or even a staff member that might prop. Empty garbage or something, I mean, it leaves kind of a situation, so.
Right.
Do we have?
So there are a couple of things, especially, that we're talking about at the high school level because, again, we have so many doors. I believe right now Jason, Mr. Crowe's talking about having three entry and exit ways for students during the course of the day. If we can get it down to two, even better. So we're looking at what those are potentially going to be. And right now, we obviously have the security entryway at the front of the building facing Center Street. The other two that we have would be coming out over by the Fine Arts Center, which, again, one of the things that we're looking at there is some of the CTE expansion and classrooms in those spaces. So if we do have kids coming and going there, how do we reposition some of our security officers during the course of the school day to be at those spaces so that there's a little bit more monitoring that's going on? Correct.
And we'll make sure we have cameras facing those doorways. And everything else should have an alarm that goes off, an audible alarm.
And that's the other piece, when we get into those door sensors and how we might be able to expand some of that. And that may be one of those things that we can kind of press the play button on that pretty quickly. They're a little bit easier to do those than it is to build a security vestibule, so. It should be a little bit quicker.
If you're at a store, for example, and it says, no exit, alarm will sound, you usually take that more seriously. Nobody wants the.
Yeah, no, it's true.
Yeah.
One other piece, and I'll throw this out to our group here, that was brought up at one of our administrative meetings. And I'm not sure how I feel about it myself yet, but somebody had done some research into metal detectors at the entryways as well. Not sure if that's a direction we would want to go as a school district or not, but thought I would throw that out to all of you just to see if there's any feedback that you would provide us on that thought.
We've been discussing about that.
I don't know how I feel about that.
I think you ought to bring in a vendor and see what they say they will do.
I'd rather talk to a district that uses them and hear what kind of, how, because our fear was, we discussed it before, is, you know, how many hundreds of students at the high school, for example, are coming in each morning? You have to have a monitored metal detector.
Sure.
You know, how many entrances can they come in? What, especially if you've got hundreds coming in within a 15-minute entry time? As buses are unloading, you know, back them out the door.
I'm not opposed to it, I'd just like to see a little research on it and see what other districts that they use it. How, how do they make it manageable?
And, I mean, I know we've talked about a community survey, you know, in the future. Is that something we could throw on a community survey, ask parents how they would feel about that?
Yeah, and would they fund it?
Yeah, I don't know what the cost associated is.
A hundred thousand dollars per.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Per unit. Oh, per unit.
Per unit.
I wish.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, it has to be monitored.
Right.
No refer to word.
Yeah, that's just the cost of the unit.
So, I mean.
Frank, have you done any real research on metal detectors in schools?
No.
To see how effective they are?
No.
Please do.
I will.
Because for years, I've always heard that they're not effective.
That would be an ideal, you said, to get an opinion from somebody who has it.
Yeah, somebody who's actually using it, how, you know.
How effective is it?
Yeah.
How much money?
Yeah, because once you invest in it, if it's a bust, you can't return it.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
I think it's an important discussion, though.
Yeah, I think it's something to look into.
It's the same, almost, well, not the same, I shouldn't say that, but it's another variable like the ID badges. It seems like a good idea, an effective idea, but there's a lot of holes in the plan that disable its effectiveness.
Because we have so many kids.
So many kids, you know, I forgot my, I forgot my badge, I lost my badge. I mean, it just, the logistics should do the enforcement piece, so.
I am glad we're having these conversations, it seems like, I mean, we started this maybe a year ago and we're getting somewhere.
We're getting, yeah, we're getting closer to a lot of good things. Final thing I'll mention then, because we brought up the transportation piece to the puzzle and how all of that works. So like anytime we start digging into something and researching, we uncover like three or four other pieces to the puzzle. So from the transportation standpoint, we currently use a routing software that we've had in the district for years. Little outdated, little clunky, so we've been looking at potentially buying something that may be new and a little bit smoother, a little bit easier, maybe a little bit more effective as well. That would incorporate a parent app that would allow that GPS tracking piece to the puzzle. The other component that we're also looking at, because again, you peel back one layer of the onion and then, okay, there are three other layers there that we need to look at, is really looking at communication as a whole in the district. So one of the things that Mrs. Estes has also been working on with Mr. Lynch through our technology office is, do we have something that we can utilize for district-wide communication as well? And it seems a little bit weird that we would be looking at, okay, a parent portal or a bus app of some sort and it impacting overall communication. But they're kind of linked a little bit. So we're trying to get the communication side with Mrs. Estes's group resolved first because there may be some applications that we can tie into our current transportation piece to the puzzle while we're looking at a broader software solution for routing, GPS tracking, communication, efficiencies in all of our transportation pieces altogether. So we wanted to run, I think, earlier on and then realized, you know, let's not just throw money at a problem right now. Let's really look at this and get a full-scale solution to this. So those are the two components right now that we're still working on and trying to marry those things together so that it's still seamless. We've already done our routing for next year from the transportation standpoint in our current routing system. So we're looking at what we might be able to do to tie in the communication pieces. Currently, a lot of the communication coming out of transportation has been an email. Well, if you're anything like me, I'm not looking at my personal email at all during the day. So what other ways might we be able to do that? And that's why we're looking at some of these other communication pieces that we might be able to tie into our transportation routing software that will also allow us to send a text message and a phone call message if we're dealing with some sort of transportation delay. So a couple of different things there that I wanted to mention. The other thing that I'll mention with transportation as well, and again, I mentioned this when we had our issue here a couple of weeks ago, when we had to close Memorial, is obviously, we've got this bus driver shortage and that's an issue. And we've been trying to look at this from more of a regional response where we're talking with the ESC of Northeast Ohio. We're trying to collaborate with some of the Geoghan and Lake County districts to figure out, is there a way for us to maybe resolve our issues by sharing some services? Maybe freeing up some of our trainers so that, because our issue right now is all of our bus trainers are driving a bus every day, which doesn't allow them to train new drivers that are coming in. So how might we free them up to be able to service multiple districts and allow those bus drivers to be trained a little bit quicker than they currently are? Because right now, it's taking us literally months to get a person trained to drive a bus for us. Based on the efficiencies for the routing for next year, we're going to be in a much better place than we currently are, or were. That's right, we're done now. Than what we were, so we're looking at some positive things, I think, heading into the coming school year. So, we're looking at some positive things, I think, heading into the coming school year. We do feel like we're going to have, I believe Heather said, around eight or nine substitute drivers heading into next school year, where this year, we entered the school year with one.
Wow.
So, a big difference there. But again, I think the efficiency pieces to the puzzle with some of the software, I think, will be a huge, huge piece for us as we jump into next year. So, just wanted to give everybody an update on that as well. Kind of loosely ties into the school safety, but kind of the communication piece to the puzzle, too.
If that's something that needs to be discussed with the union?
Potentially, depending on how efficient we get. I think right now, it's probably not going to be an issue because we need as many different people as we can for those driver shortages. Again, our issue right at the end of the school year here, we had three people out on, you know, with surgeries that we knew about. We had a couple, we had one on bereavement, we had a couple that came in very last minute that had either sick kids or were sick themselves. And we found that out fairly late in the ballgame that Thursday evening. We tried a bunch of different things and just ultimately ended up having to close one of our buildings. I will share, I will share with you, I was at a legislative breakfast on Friday and had a pretty pointed conversation with one of our state legislators about the transportation issue. A lot of it goes back to some of the requirements that are made of us to transport students to non-public institutions. And I think my quote was, you know, by God, those private school kids got to their school that day, but our public school kids had to stay home in one of our buildings. And I said, that's just not right.
Craig, what is the percentage? Do you know the percentage of private school that we're transporting right now?
It's a good question. I think there are, I'd have to look specifically at the routes, but there, I know we have a couple of drivers every day that are driving multiple routes for us.
And is it an option? Because I know if we can't transport them, we could give them a stipend.
We do payment in lieu of...
Stipend. Would it be an option just to say, hey, here's the stipend? I don't know what's in the Ohio revised code, if that's a...
I think it's the 30-minute, I think we're required if it's a 30-minute or less.
And it depends on if it's, if it's something that we feel is impractical, we can rule that impractic, that route impractical and not transport.
Then we do have to pay them, yeah.
And we do the payment in lieu of.
But is that like an option? Like, to say, hey, you know, we're just going to pay you instead?
Is it impractical because we have a lack of drivers?
Right.
Well, that's a good question. I don't know if that's necessarily the case.
There are specific reasons why it's impractical, there's a list, you have to make sure it's one of those reasons.
And they get a separate bus? I'm not familiar if it's like, they get a separate...
It's a matter of, yeah. And again, our issue, some of the, some of the districts have been struggling just having enough buses.
Right.
We've got, we've got enough buses, we just don't have enough drivers.
Right.
And they're tied up for an hour going from here to some of the farthest-flung destinations. So, that, you know, where you could be part of the loop, you're all the way there, that's going to limit...
That's right, I'm just wondering if we could offer, like, would, would they take the stipend?
Sometimes it's cheaper, sometimes it's cheaper to...
To bus them?
To bus them.
But, I mean, if we could still, if we could give them a stipend and still provide our students then with busing, so we don't end up in that situation, it might be something to look into.
One of the other things, again, as we talked about that regional response as well, like, talking to Dr. Hanlon over at Chardon, for example, you know, we have to drive through Chardon to take kids to Notre Dame, Cathedral Latin, you know, they have to drive up to Lake Catholic, you know, how do we share services there to maybe, okay, we'll transport our kids and Chardon's kids to NDCL in the morning, maybe Chardon can transport the Lake Catholic kids, something like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, we're trying to approach things kind of outside-the-box thinking a little bit, what are, but what are some of those shared services that we might be able to come up with? So, we'll see how that, how that evolves with our conversations over the coming year, too.
Could you give us the percentage, just, I'm curious to see the percentage of private schooling busing that we have? And how many can, I know we had it to approve of at one point on the stipends, how much, I don't remember that right offhand, if we could get that.
I thought that's dictated by Ohio laws.
It is, the amount, but I don't know how many do we have that we're actually paying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think there's just a few.
Heather has that.
They get paid pretty...
Five hundred.
Yeah, it's like almost, isn't it?
It's a couple of...
Yeah.
Just a little bit of...
I'd say it's even more than that.
One up a lot more than the...
Yeah.
It used to be like a couple hundred, now it's like five hundred.
I was surprised at how much it was. I want to say it was like a lot more than I thought we would be paying.
When you were speaking with the legislators, were they sympathetic or were they aware of what a burden that they've put on the public schools?
I think part of it was, it was interesting because the one gentleman that was there, I relatively knew, I think he just took office in January, and he was kind of asking the question, you know, and saying, you know, what are some things that we can do to potentially help? And that was one of the things that came up was, you know, look at those requirements that are, that are being placed on us. And it was in a, in a broader school funding conversation around the vouchers and the backpack bill and those sorts of things, too. But, but again, transportation requirements, you know, kind of hamstring us.
Thanks for that update.
Yeah. Any questions from the school safety side of things?
You have the school safety board liaison, is that something?
Oh, yes.
I know several of us have mentioned that.
So, again, that's something that we want to get up and ready to go, obviously, as we enter next school year, and having that kind of a broader committee to meet with our, our safety people with the city here as we go throughout next, next school year. And again, that's something that we brought up with, with Chief Gunch as well and Mr. Filippiak. Obviously, I'm going to take a little bit bigger role next year with, with Mr. Porter taking a step back. Mr. Hammond's going to be part of that, Ms. Estes will be part of that. And then, meeting with Mr. Filippiak, Chief Gunch, and Chief Searls. But looking for a couple of our board members to kind of serve in that, very similar to what we've done this year with our curriculum liaison committee. Probably meeting quarterly at this point. I think we've had two or, well, I don't know how many meetings we've been booted out of this year, but more than likely on a normal year, it would be quarterly, just to kind of go through safety procedures, you know, what are some of those drills and professional development that we need to have? We can talk safety budgets, continue our conversations around the SRO expansion, and really look at some of the safety grant funding here in the district and around the state as well, because oftentimes, the city also will, will have some, some safety grants that they can tap into and how might we work together with them. So, looking for a recommendation from your group here today about who those two board reps may be on that, on that committee?
I would love to do it, I'm not on the curriculum committee, you know, I, I would love to be a part of the safety committee, so I'm volunteering, but, you know, sure, everyone's very interested.
I also would love to be if I could, because I feel like Maggie and I have had probably several conversations.
We have.
In reference to safety.
Tom, Jenny, Mary, anybody else?
Do you want more than two? Well, you can only have two.
Yeah, we're just looking for two.
Yeah, that would be just fine, I think.
I wouldn't mind, yeah.
Because you're already on financial as well.
And Jenny, you're on the foundation, sorry.
Well, foundation is like a, but I'm on curriculum.
You're on curriculum.
And you're on financial right now as well.
Mary, are you on anything else?
I just do legislation.
I'm okay with Mary doing what she wants, because that'll take, I mean, we might need something.
Because that'll take us through, yeah.
Through the next year, Jan, yeah.
Yeah, through January, and then we see where that is.
That's fine.
So, if we start with Maggie and Mary, and then we'll, we'll just make sure that we provide some of the similar updates that we do with financial and curriculum then as well.
Makes sense.
So, we will go with Maggie and Mary for that first one. And as soon as we figure out what those meeting dates will be, we'll share that with you.
And do you have plans for policy committees? Because we have to get our dates.
So, just to give everyone the updates here, as soon as we get done with the full-scale drill tomorrow, the rest of my time will be spent doing the board update things for the next couple of weeks. We do hope to have those things out to you guys here shortly. And again, one of the things that, I met with Tom and Annie last week, talking board policy pieces to the puzzle, and part of their suggestion was maybe including, because I sent, who did I send that to? Annie and Mary, I sent the first chapter to with all of the policies in there and some of the areas that we might need some input from, from you on as far as some of the language goes. I'm going to do that for all of those and send you that Google Doc so that you can see each chapter. But I'll send that to everybody. We'll still have the two people that are assigned to each chapter come in just to have conversation about, okay, how do we tweak this a little bit? And we'll make those edits right in that document so that you can see those, so that everybody can see those, so that when we get into our conversations here at the July meeting and then the August meeting, we'll have the first reading in July. We can answer any questions, figure out exactly what we want to do with those policies in July, and then we can vote on the manual then in August. So, we'll have those things out to you here shortly, and I'll, again, hoping to be able to have those things out a little bit later this week. Might not have every single chapter, but we'll have a good portion of them out to you here.
So, when you, I'm just trying to like, I'm trying to visualize this tonight, because I haven't seen it yet. So, will all have a document with all of the options and we'll see it being edited live?
Yeah, so there, the way these things are set up in the, in the Google Docs that I've been playing with, and there's a lot of language that's just standard, and we just have it in regular black font, and there's no real options available, it's just the standard language from Neola. If there's something that we are already currently doing with our practice here that is pretty standard, we'll have that in black font as well. If there are some things that are choice language pieces that come out of those Neola templates, that we want some additional input from, from the entire board on, those will be in a different color font, and you'll be able to see what those things are to, and I'll explain it all.
Is that okay with sunshine law, that we kind of see this?
See, see the full documents?
Like, and we're all inputting on the...
Well, because what will happen is you'll be reading those things just so that you can read everything, because you'll, everybody will need to do that. The two people that are actually coming in to help with some of the policy language pieces to the puzzle, those will be the two that are actually doing some of the edits within that particular...
We can't edit the document, we can only view it. So, we would have to like email him separately.
Okay.
Because I locked them all down.
Because that's a good question, the sunshine law, we have to be careful of that. Like, we can't all be in there editing things.
Right.
Right, okay.
So, we can view it, but then we would have to provide...
So, when you guys come in to have those conversations with me, I'll get in, we'll edit those things.
We can't, we just can't like comment on it on the side or messaging.
Right.
So, one question.
So, we'll have all of those things.
Let's say out of all of the chapters, let's say there was some detail, maybe in personnel, which is a big one. So, in personnel, the policy would read in this particular way, and these would be the supporting administrative guidelines. Let's say that in a broader discussion, when we're at the point where we're recommending it to go forward, there is a concern or something that needs to be further discussed, can we approve?
Yeah, this is the conversation we're having.
That's what we had with Craig last night.
So, but if we, we could approve the whole thing with the stipulation that we are going to revisit Chapter Seven, this detail, because any document can be further modified and refined.
Right.
But, so that we don't end up with no new policy at all when the bulk of it has been thought about and agreed upon, we don't want to hold up the whole thing because there's this area that we want to refine further, just...
So, one of the things that I'll be doing here this week, on Thursday, we have our meeting with, with legal counsel, I want to talk through what that might look like. Part of the conversation that we've been having is, do we, if we have a policy like that, that we want to pull out and have a separate conversation about, you know, here's the bulk, here's the, here's the manual, this is what we're voting on, but we're pulling out, you know, Policy 2150, for example, to have more conversation about that and vote on that separate. That may be something that we, we would have to look at. Two people I want to talk to, one is our legal counsel, number two is Ed Holland from, from Neola, you know, who, you know, he's representing that, that company that we're paying for, you know, I want to make sure that we, we utilize him as much as humanly possible as well.
Because I can't imagine that this wouldn't be something that has happened maybe frequently before.
Absolutely.
There could be, I don't know, a transportation, let's say it was transportation, something or other, that, you know, how far away the kids are going to walk or whatever it is, I don't know that that would be included in our policy, but if it was, and there was, you know, just some kind of refinement that we needed to do, I don't want to see us holding up the whole manual.
Right.
But I also don't want to ignore the fact that there may be something that we want to look through, you know?
And we also need to be quick on it, though, because we would have, we'd have a hole where we wouldn't have policy.
Right, no, there would have to be, we need to resolve it rapidly, but I, I want to make sure we have a policy to start the new school year.
Right. And again, that's why we would have that first reading in July as well, if we start to recognize what some of those policy numbers are that we want to maybe pull out and have additional conversation about, you know, we can have part of that conversation in July, have the other part of that conversation in August. And again, we'll work through what that procedure would be to actually approve those, whether we pull those out and have a separate reading of those particular policies, we can certainly do that as well.
Your, both of you and the administrative team who's been working with you is to be applauded for the volume of work that's been accomplished. It's a big undertaking.
It's huge.
Yeah, I mean, just hours of fun.
You're thrilled.
Joyce going to Arizona.
He's speaking of Arizona.
He can't even pick his head up off his shoulder. The pain of the joy has been so, so intoxicating.
There's other words that would use to describe it, yes.
Oh, intoxicating. But anyway, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that we make as much progress as we can in a very practical way, but still leave room for whatever else needs to be addressed.
And again, I might be able to give some updates here by the end of this week based on those conversations here over the next few days, and I can include that in my update at the, on Friday for everyone, too.
And do you have any dates for us who have specific chapters that we're addressing? Not yet, okay.
But we'll get that.
Because that was the only thing I wanted to make sure my calendar was marked.
I know the other thing that was on the agenda here is to discuss the summer board meeting schedule.
Yes.
So...
That's because of the new speaker system.
It's really jamming.
City put it.
It's real loud.
Yes.
Very nice.
Well, and we want to make sure we, we don't have board meetings on the concerts that we actually want to go to, is that right?
Yes. We have to go out by seven so we can all go over there.
Regardless, we're going to have the concert here.
You'll feel like you're there.
You might feel like you're in there.
And our ceiling tiles don't fall.
So, I think the discussion we were having, this goes back to the meeting that we had last Monday, was with regards to, do we want to move those dates, do we want to move the time earlier, much like city council has, summer hours, because really, it'd only have to be for July and August.
Yeah.
June, July, and August.
June, July, August.
Right. So...
Because June is next week, right?
Yeah.
Correct. Tomorrow, again, tomorrow, somebody, somebody will know. It's seven o'clock here, right? At seven o'clock here, right? Because isn't the first concert tomorrow?
Yes, the first concert is tomorrow.
Yeah, so, like someone should.
They run a hearing test.
Someone should come.
The Prince Experience.
Just to feel it.
That's what it is?
Yes. You can.
How come in this building, it's experience?
You drive it over.
Well, I think.
You feel like it's 1999.
So, city council does it early, they move theirs up.
They do. They normally have a seven o'clock meeting and they move it to five.
I'm a fan of that, because I don't, I think people expect us to have it the second Tuesday of the month.
Is five early enough?
But is five, I was just going to say.
And they start when?
Seven.
Seven.
We don't typically.
Start at five or seven.
Well, that'd make the incentive to get it done by seven.
We have summer hours, we have a hard stop at seven.
It'll be hard to hear. Well, we're not sure.
What am I going to do with the next four hours of my night?
We're going to go to the concert.
Go to the concert.
What do you mean?
So, are we looking at keeping the Tuesdays by moving them to five?
That's fine with me. Whatever anybody wants to do, I'm fine with adjusting.
So, okay, that's, move to five o'clock. Can you, the question on that is, so, we had anticipated a pre-executive session, so would that be four o'clock?
Is everybody okay with that?
Can Mary make that, because she's working.
I can do that. Was that for June or July?
June.
Well, it'd be for July as well, because.
Yeah.
That works for me.
Not flexible.
I'm also very flexible right now.
It's summertime.
I'll tell you what, I'm pushing it for dinnertime. I'm a hard seven o'clock runner here.
Okay.
It's going on eight o'clock.
It's election day.
Say that again?
Oh, the August is election day. Maybe we should move that.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's the eighth, right?
Yeah, the eighth.
Don't we have voting here?
Yeah, but we could do, we could do the meeting.
Oh, yeah, like here, like in this room.
In this room.
We could still do the meeting in the Fine Arts Center at five o'clock.
Yeah, we can move that one.
Anybody who wants to come to the meeting can vote for it.
There you go. If this is the voting spot. Have they consolidated it a lot? I don't know, they were getting trouble in some.
Well, there wasn't supposed to be an election, if you recall.
I do recall. But I think they.
So, August the eighth at five.
Depending on whether our county is struggling to get enough poll voters.
They're going to vote here. They are, they, they're going to.
But I mean, how many, how big a region this spot will serve.
Oh, we've condensed because we had to adjust our new teacher orientation to allow voting to occur in this space. So, they're only going to get a section of the space, which they were appreciative of, so they didn't have to move the, move the venue.
Gotcha. So, we're meeting at four o'clock for June, July, and August, or just June and July?
June and July at four for executive session and then, so we'll stay with July 11th. That'll be five o'clock for the regular meeting and that one will be in here. And then August will be just a five o'clock and that one will be moved to the Fine Arts So, June 13th, four for executive session, five for regular meeting, and that will be in Paradigm.
So, five o'clock at the Fine Arts Center in August?
Yes. All right, everybody got that?
No.
So, June 13th, four o'clock executive session, 5:00 p.m. regular meeting here in Paradigm. July 11th, 4:00 p.m. executive session, 5:00 p.m. regular meeting here in Paradigm. August 8th, 5:00 p.m. regular meeting in the Fine Arts Center. Do we have a mic drop on that? Any other business?
That's the business we can talk about.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Call the roll, please, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessley.
Yes.
Ms. Brighter.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Tuttle.
Yes.
7:46 p.m., this meeting.